All right, I'll call this meeting to order at seven o'clock. Or is it seven oh one? Um, under the agenda, could you please add an addition of eighteen point six under in camera? Uh, boreal housing? Is there any other addition?
Madam Mayor, administration has no additions.
Thank you. Could I have someone move the agenda then, please?
I'll move.
Mark, uh, Counsel Librian, all in favor? Carried. I'd like to welcome Staff Sergeant Bitmar to this meeting. Another busy month.
Yes. Nice seeing everyone again.
Yeah.
Um, so I'll get right to it. So I'd like to touch briefly on the calls for service in two thousand and twenty-three, uh, that detachment had. It sometimes takes a few weeks for all the data entry to be made, so this is a fairly accurate number. So based on Pro's data, the high-level detachment generated six thousand two hundred and sixty-seven files between January and December of two thousand and twenty-three. So this includes calls for service from the public as well as self-generated and proactive files. So that is an increase of ten point seven percent in two thousand and twenty-three when compared to two thousand and twenty-two. The files generated by provincial traffic units are not included in those numbers. So that's, uh, quite the jump from the year before. Uh, and this month, this year, compared to January two thousand and twenty-three, there's a twenty-one point five percent decrease in the total persons crime. So that's trending down from January last year to January this year. Sixteen point eight percent in total property crime and twenty-six decrease in total criminal code offenses. So those numbers break down to in, uh, January twenty-one total persons offenses, sixty-eight total property offenses, and thirty total criminal code offenses. Uh, our prisoner count for January is one hundred and fifty-seven. And we have one vacant constable position right now. We also have two members on restricted duties, uh, due to injuries, but we're expecting them to be back soon. And we have one vacant, um, support staff. Uh, all our NCO positions are full right now, so. Any questions about, about that at all?
Any questions from counsel? I don't have any questions on the report, but I have some concerns that are being raised by the public about turning on to, um, hundred and fourteenth, uh, Toco, about log trucks going through the intersections and turning in front of people and...
Yeah, I saw the Facebook post.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering, is that a Toco, it, um...
It's, it's either enforcement, uh, you know, they have, everyone has to obey the laws as well, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, but yeah, that's an enforcement. It also, the, the company sometimes. I know when I drove truck, uh, if we were doing things like rolling stop signs to save time, we'd get a call and the boss would say, hey, you know, uh, respect the laws. So that's something that we can look at for sure, yeah.
Yeah, maybe we put some more enforcement out there. I don't know.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, you gotta be there when they do it.
Yeah, enforcement or education.
Yeah.
Sometimes makes a big difference, so.
They all have big signs on the side that, uh, I think the mill has a toll or a number that you can call.
It could be, um, how's my driving type sign, that type of?
Yeah, no, I think you can report them at the mill if they're...
Oh, okay.
That was my only...
Okay.
Yes.
Have a complaint line that people can call. And what they're looking for, there's a number that's on the bumper of every unit. Um, if they can get the number or the make and color of the truck, the time, the direction, all of the units apparently are GPS tracked. So if you give them that information, they can actually figure out which driver it is and like be that specific, so. And that's all through the Upper Hay Regional Management Force Public Advisory Group stuff. So, um, that number is out there if you were to give someone at Toco a call. There, it's for all of the mills. It doesn't matter which truck it is.
Yeah.
It's one number to call.
Yep, yep.
There's a number on the bumper? On the front or... Oh, I thought it was on the side, okay.
Probably sort of like our police vehicles, like we have like high-level one oh one or... Yeah.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
You too. Thanks, guys.
Did you have something? Sorry, Counsel Jessman, I thought I heard you.
He's in the...
I was just gonna, I was just gonna add to, uh, to Counselor Langford's comments there that, uh, they, they do have a program within the Toco Mill that manages, uh, traffic violations. And I reached out to the Woodlands manager and that's probably the quickest and easiest way to, uh, have it addressed. Uh, they'll address it usually within a day or that day. So his name's Wade Cable and I could forge you that contact. That's the quickest and easiest way. But yes, if there are violations or speeding or unsafe, uh, procedures out there, there, there are numbers that you can take and report it as well, so.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Jessman. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And I'm not married to the CEO. That was on Facebook. All right. Um, could I have someone approve the minutes if there's no errors?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. We just, um, wanted to note that an error was found in the minutes um, under motion number thirty-six and number forty-one. Uh, we admitted to write carried. That has been rectified.
Okay. Could I have a motion then, please? Nobody wants to approve the minutes. Okay, we'll wait here. Counsel Anderson, all in favor? Carried. Uh, could I have someone move the RCMP report, please? If there's no question. Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carried. So you have my report. Um, after attending the drought resilience meeting, um, I'm actually quite scared for this summer. And, um, I was hoping that perhaps we could put a task force together. Um, maybe I'll put it under a motion to put one together to, uh, discuss things that the town can do. I don't know if we want to form a task force or a committee or whatever, but we need to do something, I think, to be proactive about. Um, Counsel Lambert and Counselor, uh, Anderson were also there. And, uh, the main points are in my, uh, report. And our region right now is in severe drought. We're not as bad as Grand Prairie, but we're, um... Did you get that slide deck, CEO?
No, from that presentation? No, I have not.
Okay, so I do have a slide deck that they use to present that I could send to all counselors. And maybe it could be a discussion for committee of whole.
Sure.
Which I won't be here for.
Well, we can also take a look at some of their, their concerns and bring forward some stats for the town as well.
Mm-hmm.
Our reservoir sizes, the projections on the lake, that type of thing.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, their number one, their number one thing, um, that they learned, they said, is be prepared. It's a little, it took during the Melk River crisis, twenty-two weeks to get water back to the people. So, very interesting. Um, February third, the first responders banquet, um, we attended. It was, uh, very well done. Um, and it was really nice to see the RCMP and the sheriffs and unfortunately, Aram medical was on calls. We couldn't make it.
Yeah, representative there.
Yes, one rep... Um, on Growing the North, um, I've been asked to sit on a panel roundtable uh, with other reeves and mayors. And, um, we met to plan for the event. And I have been asked to talk about fire mitigation and, uh, rural rail. And then, of course, boreal housing, it will be in camera. Is there any questions? Could I have someone move my report?
I'll move it, Madam Mayor.
Counsel Welkey, thank you. All in favor? Carried. Uh, Deputy Mayor?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Counsel Anderson?
So I also attended January thirty-first, the multi-year drought conference. And, um, I'll echo, uh, the mayor's concerns that we need to put some kind of a group together to further, uh, look into our situation and, and be prepared. Um, February seventh, Golden Range, uh, society meeting. Uh, on February eighth, a special meeting of the high-level library board. And on February tenth, uh, the Golden Range Open House. And that's what all I had to report on.
Yes, and the Golden Range Open House was very good, too.
Yes, it was. Well-attended.
Yes. Uh, Counsel Lambert? You're on.
Um, on January twenty-third, I attended a Chamber of Commerce meeting. Um, just discussed more thing, more plans for the year, uh, coming. And on January thirty-first, also attended the, uh, multi-year drought conference in Grand Prairie with the mayor and Counsel Anderson.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Librian?
Okay, on, uh, the twenty-fourth, I attended the film task force. On the twenty-fifth was a high-level library board meeting. And then I was in the assessment review board training from the twenty-second to the twenty-sixth. Um, I also attended the first responders banquet on the third, and that was very good. The food was amazing. And on February fifth, um, for that week, I was also in SDAB new member training. And on February eighth, I was also at the library board meeting.
Did you quit your job? That's a lot of assessment reviews.
That's a lot, yeah. That's quite the course.
How was your mind?
Um, the second week wasn't as bad as the first week. The first week was pretty heavy, but the second week was more situational and cases, stuff like that.
It's good, it's good training.
It is.
Counsel Welkey?
On January twenty-fourth, I also attended the film task force meeting. We're kind of back on track. We had to relocate all of our administrative records, but we've got most of it now and we're, you know, moving forward with, uh, a plan. Uh, our next meeting, we're going to have, um, Director Schmidt come and discuss, uh, impacts to bylaws and things and safety, um, concerns, you know, when developing our, uh, policies and procedures around, uh, that industry, doing work in our municipality. On the twenty-ninth of January, I had a community futures board meeting. And I also attended on February third, the first responders recognition dinner, which, yes, was very, very well, um, presented and attended, and that's all I have to report.
Okay. Where were your records for the film?
We had an administrative, uh, staff change.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and, um, and we just had to, uh, kind of recompile, you know, our, uh, our, um, information from our previous meetings.
Counsel Jessman?
I have nothing to... I have nothing to report at this time, no. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I have someone move counsel reports, please?
I'll move.
Counsel Welkey, all in favor? Carried. Under the action list... Um, has the group met for the bushy water?
Uh, we're waiting for Counsel Jessman to return to high level.
Oh, okay.
They have made appointments, though, so.
Oh, okay.
We'll reach out to them as soon as Terry's back.
All right. Thank you. Um, and I guess CRA, did we pay that invoice?
As far as I'm aware, um, the Canadian Royal Rail Alliance.
Oh, for the two thousand, yep. Yes, we did.
Okay, I want to get off the bad list. All right, if there's no more questions, could I have someone move? Counsel Librian, all in favor? Carried. Upcoming events? If there are... Could I get a motion, please? Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carried. Strategic plans? I have a question, uh, CEO, on page thirty-three. The, uh, the, um, fiber, are we done with that?
The town of High Levels part of it is essentially com- complete. Um, as I mentioned last time, they have most of the conduit in, they're making the connections, and they expect to start hookups next year, so.
Okay.
In fact, I think, uh, I saw them pulling fiber along the power poles in the older section of town the other day.
Oh, okay. Does anybody have any questions about the report? Could I have a motion to accept it then, please? Counsel Lambert, it's like nobody wants to... All in favor? Carried. Um, counsel's monthly report? How did your, uh, rural meeting go?
Uh, really well, uh, and the businesses there would like to thank counsel for enrolling in the program. They're quite excited about it. Uh, we had about thirty people out, Josh, all together. Yeah, um, everybody, there was a lot of good questions. There was a couple of things that we were unsure of that we said we'd get back to them about. And we have now had four registered businesses and two that, uh, look as in the process of processing. Uh, and we expect our first applications for letters of endorsement next week.
Okay, good. I would have come, but I didn't know we were, we were allowed to.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't know it was going on, so. That's good. Good job, everyone.
Josh came in with three hats on.
Oh, did he? Good. Um, is there any other questions about the monthly report? Why don't we have a financial report?
I believe we're kind of in ours together, administration and fin- finances.
What's that?
Our financial report, like the quarterly report, it wasn't ready. It will be at your end of the month one.
Anybody else have questions? I have another question. The, uh, development across from McKenzie House. They're working.
Yes.
What are they building?
It, uh, the, a permit was just put in paper. It's a sixteen-unit apartment building, and they intend to start construction right away.
Yeah, they, they were taking, I was amazed that they were able to...
So were we a little bit, but he's, he's, yeah, he's ready to go. And that would be the first of three similar units if, uh, if it works out for him.
So the first unit is going to be sixteen apartments?
And actually, the plans are for two more of those, um, one next year and one the year after.
And so it's gone from a two-plex to a four-plex to a six-plex?
Yes, I think that, uh, that there's a practicality on the need for housing in the town of High Levels.
Oh, that's awesome.
So multi-story, um...
It's, it's, uh, I guess it's sort of like a two-level split. There's, there's eight in the ba- in the lower floor and eight in the upper floor, so. Um, there are access through the sides of the building. It's, yeah, it's a nice little layout there. They're not going to be big units, but they look like they'll be quite comfortable, and the location is good.
Yeah. All right, could I have someone move the monthly report, please? Counsel Librian, all in favor? Carried. Under new business, we have the, uh, Ready, um, Business Showcase. And, uh, I... Did, uh, you get a letter from Andrew? About counsel attending? Did I?
Oh, that was, uh, that was part of what we were going to ask tonight, is who is, who is able to attend. But I think, uh, Mr. Awark is also looking for sponsorships, so.
Oh? Well, I thought we weren't going to ask.
Oh, that's the package he sent us.
One other municipality has offered to donate, so he thought he would put it out to all of the member municipalities.
Well, we could probably do a lunch or, uh, what do you call it, coffee? What, what's for sponsors?
Uh, it's on page... Yeah, it's a thousand for coffee, four thousand for lunch, five thousand for a title, and six thousand for the dinner sponsors.
How much money do we have in our council?
Um, you can probably afford even up to a lunch if you wanted in your council initiatives.
Counsel, what do you think? We're hosting in our community. Should we sponsor something?
Yes.
What would you like to sponsor?
I'd be okay with lunch.
Rest of council?
Or should we be a title?
A title? Okay. Someone want, Counsel Jessman, are you okay?
Yeah, no, I, I agree with the lunch.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to...
Counsel Welkey?
Sponsor the lunch or a lunch during the ready-made business showcase.
It's going to be a really good showcase.
So Madam Mayor, the next question is...
All, all in favor of that motion?
Oh.
Carried, yes.
Uh, who would like to attend?
Well, I think I'm attending, but I don't need to pay because I'm on the board.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And neither does Counsel or Deputy Mayor.
I would like to attend.
What? You can go to assessment training, but you can't attend it?
Doing something else for the town?
There's some really good...
Oh, what is, what is that? Oh, that's RMA.
So just the tr- or two, Counsel Anderson, are you interested? Okay. All right. Counsel Jessman?
Not at this time, sorry.
Okay.
It's toss-up between this and RMA.
Could I have a motion to attend or to, uh, send Counsel Lambert, Counsel Welkey?
I'll make the motion.
Counsel Anderson makes the motion, all in favor? Carried. You're committed here now.
Nope.
You will be after the registration. Uh, the, the next one is from, um, Keith Lovican. They are having a round dance, um, weekend, and they're looking for sponsorship from the town. Does anybody want to make a motion here? Do we have any money after we spend that?
Uh, Madam Mayor, we have the, uh, three hundred dollar community grants that we can give administratively if counsel would like us to do that.
I'm okay with that.
Counsel, are you fine with it? Can we throw some swim passes in there, too?
Sure.
Because they're looking for, like, they said monetary, but also, you know, like, donations of other... So perhaps we could...
Individual passes?
We could just give the one-off passes, sure.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, do you need a motion, I guess?
No, the administration can do that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next one is from, uh, Mary Ann King on policy for policing. And, uh, this is interesting that, that they were supposed to put that money into extra policing, and we still haven't got any extra police here.
Uh, they did give support, uh, they did create more support staff. I could check and see if there were more officers added.
We don't have an ARPAK team yet.
Yeah.
Um... Does anybody, uh, want to, uh, make a motion here that we send this letter? Like, the police act says that we are supposed to be setting up a... Did you read that, Counsel Jessman? We're supposed to be setting up a committee that's funded. We can either be part of a regional or, uh, we can do our own. Uh, most communities, I guess, haven't even done it. I didn't even know that this was a motion in twenty twenty-two. So, yeah, like, I would like, does, would this fall under your policing committee? Or is it just...
I don't, uh, I haven't seen there any, uh, material on this.
Yeah, this is the first I've heard about it.
Yeah, no.
Maybe you want to take it to your, is yours still the policing committee? Or is it just victim services are now?
We're, we're still in place, like, victim service is still fully functional, so, um...
Under the policing umbrella?
Yep, yep.
So maybe you could take this to your board then? About...
I could do that.
Okay, I'll talk to you about it when you get back.
Hey.
So can, uh, does somebody want to make a motion to send this letter? Counsel Lambert, all in favor? Carried. Uh, any correspondence for information?
No, Madam Mayor, just a couple of reports, one from the Transportation Society, one from the Main Society. Um, the vacancy and rental cost survey was interesting. In twenty twenty-three, we had two vacant rental spaces.
Yeah.
Out of a hundred and sixty-seven. I'm sorry, two hundred and sixty-seven.
I'm just, I'm more concerned about the dogs. Not having a place to live.
Oh.
Um, okay, so could I have someone move correspondence for information then? Counsel Anderson, all in favor? Carried. And that ends our public portion... And that ends our public portion of our meeting. Do you have any questions, Mr. Stroh?
Nope.
Welcome back. It's so awesome to see you sitting there. Oh, I can't wait to have you back up here. All right, so, um, this will end our public portion. Could I have a motion to move us in camera, please? Counsel Lambert, all in favor? Carried.